Welcome everyone to our Bible study and today we are going to continue with the topic that we have been tackling with the past couple of sessions. Which is really to, you know, we're looking at the nature of God and it has been necessary to go back and if you like, continue the study that we began in Genesis chapter one. And to then gradually trace our way back to where, where we had gotten to with other topics. And by doing that, what we've seen is that there's some watershed moments in, in the history of mankind or the history of God's dealings with man. There's some watershed moments. There's a moment that changed everything. We saw that Genesis chapter three was obviously the first most important one, sin entered the frame and that changed everything. And I can, you can easily say that that was the single most important event to have happened to mankind. Every problem that you are facing right now in your life, you can track it, you can trace it back to Genesis chapter three. Then we saw that God made some interventions in Genesis chapter four, Genesis chapter six with Noah's flood. And Genesis chapter 11 with the twelve Bible and now we are on Genesis chapter 12 onwards, talking about God's dealings with Abraham. Now, I think I've already mentioned how important Abraham is. Abraham is so important, you know, the Bible tells us that he is the father of the faith. He is a father to the Jews, the Muslims claim him as well. And we Christians recognize, even though Jesus is our Lord, we recognize the important role that Abraham played. And he is mentioned in Paul's letter to the Romans and Paul specifically mentions, you know, the role of Abraham. How Abraham believed in God and it was counted to him as righteousness and that his example, him believing in God, he set an example for the rest of us on how to relate with God. Which is quite important. It's like God's relationship with Abraham literally pointed to how God would restore his relationship with mankind. That's, that's probably one way of putting it, you know? God was saying, look, you sinned. I'll tell you, sin, the relationship with you was, when mankind was damaged. And your interventions here and there, but then in Abraham, things start to get back on track and God begins to show us in Abraham how he would really want to, his relationship with mankind to look like. That's why Abraham is so important. Now, what we saw was that by choosing Abraham or by starting to, starting the relationship with Abraham, something changed in God, in the dynamics with the rest of humanity. One example being the fact that Abraham lied about his wife. He did not come clean. When he went to Egypt, he told his wife to lie and to say that, look, you're not my wife, you are just my sister and Sarah obeyed just to save his life. But in doing so, he got Sarah in trouble. And in the end, that got Pharaoh also in trouble. The same thing happened when Abraham went to dwell, you know, in Gerar and the Abimelech took Sarah again. And we saw that God acted in both ways instances to save Abraham's life and actually punished the people. And so we wondered, is that evidence of favoritism? I use the word partial, which is a word we use, we use in those days in Ghana, pasha, pasha. And that slipped, made its way into my slide, but really the gospel favoritism. And we had different responses. Some people felt they, no, I think most people felt that God didn't show favoritism. But you know, I think there were other voices that said, well, maybe you could argue that maybe there was some favoritism. But the point, the take home message was God had to show some favoritism. And we don't have to feel bad about it. We don't have to feel like we need to defend God. We don't have to feel like, you know, that somehow God did something so bad that we have to try and hide it. Every father shows favoritism when it comes to his children. It's just normal. Everybody shows favoritism when it comes to his friends. You don't treat your friends the same way as you treat strangers. It's just normal. God created the whole universe and we all sinned. We all went astray. We all went our own way. And by doing so, I mean, God was sort of God of the universe, that if you read Genesis chapter six, what you get is that God was just wrestling with mankind. He was wrestling with mankind, doing his best to try and get us to listen to him. Get us to start having a relationship with him. In the end, he said, you know what, my soul will, I won't continue to do this forever. I, this is wearing me out. I'm not going to be doing this forever. I'm going to shorten man's life. But man is going to only live one earth for a limited amount of time. So I don't have to do this indefinitely. So that's what happened there and it's because God wants to have a relationship with man. He wants to have a relationship with man. So when he found Abraham, it was only natural that he should say, ha, finally somebody that understands me, somebody I can have a relationship with, somebody I can actually have conversations with. Somebody I can call a friend. The Bible says he called him a friend. Now, once you call someone a friend, you cannot be neutral. And you call someone your friend and treat the same, that person the same way as you treat other people. Your friend, your, your friend will be surprised if you did that to them. Being a friend of God came with privileges and Abraham enjoyed them. And there are people who have an issue with that. Well, that's, I would say tough because we can't impose on God our standards. Even we show favoritism to people that we are in a relationship with. Those are the rules of relationship. So I think it's important that we come to terms with that, you know, just as we believers. The Bible says, if God is for us, who can be against us? God treats us as also his special possession. Do we want God to treat us the same way as he treats unbelievers? I don't want that. I don't know about you. I want him to consider me to be special. When I cry out to God over an issue and an unbeliever cries out to God and his request opposes mine, I want God to choose mine. Because I'm his, because I committed my life to him. And that comes with privileges. So I don't want, I don't think that it is right for a child of God to feel bad and to try to want to explain or to try and defend God, the fact that maybe God showed favoritism. Does the porter not have the right with the same lump of clay to form one vessel or another? That kind of right God can exercise because we are like the clay, he is the portal. But you know what? He doesn't even approach things this way. The Bible says he causes his rain to fall on the, on the ground of the wicked and the righteous at the same time. That's his goodness. He, he sustains life on the planet. He makes life easy for everybody. God's relationship, special relationship with Abraham, with the Abraham descendants and then subsequently with believers doesn't make him an unjust God. He is still a just God, but as a father, he must be a father to his children. As a friend, he must act like a friend. Those are the rules of the game. Those things come with a relationship. Okay. There's us, Jesus is the son of God and Jesus says, I have obeyed my father and I dwell in my father's love. Now that means Jesus was enjoying something that the angels weren't enjoying. They were all in the same heaven, or they are all in the same heaven. But they don't enjoy the same intimacy. They don't enjoy the same love that Jesus enjoys. Relationship affords privileges. It's just natural. And by the way, God wants that relationship for everyone. If you remember very well, when the Israelites left Egypt, God paved the way for them to leave captivity. Guess what? A mixed multitude went with them. Foreigners that were living in Egypt at the time, remember Egypt was a, was a superpower, was the, was the richest nation around at the time. Remember that Jacob and his whole family had moved there when there was a famine. And Jacob wouldn't have been the only one to have moved there during the famine. Other, other people from other countries would have moved there because that was the place where there was food. And some of these people would have settled because the famine lasted seven years. So Egypt clearly had a mixed multitude. It was a multiracial country. And when the Israelites left, clearly people maybe who also lived in Goshen or lived around us, those areas who had good relationships with the Israelites. We are not staying behind. If you guys go, we also go, we also go. And so they followed them and they left. Did God say purge the multitude, the mixed multitude amongst you because they are not part of, they are not God's covenant people, they are not, they are not a special people, therefore remove them? No, they didn't say that. When they came to Mount Sinai and God made a covenant between himself and Israel, the mixed multitude was there. And they all participated in that covenant. What does that say to you about God? He wants to have a relationship with everyone. He wants to extend his love to every single person, but it's not everybody that's going to accept that. Isn't everybody that's going to recognize the, the, the opportunity being given to them? So it's very important. Anytime that you, the argument of is God, does God show favoritism? Is God unjust? Anytime that argument comes up, just, just bear this in mind. God will show favoritism to his children, but also leave the door open to anybody who wants to become his child. That's how he does it. So that if you come and if you, if you enter his fold, he will treat you like one of his. You know, and it just dawned on me, I mean, just a thought just crossed my mind about Abimelech. Abimelech had a dream and in the dream, God revealed himself to him and said, the, the woman that you have taken is somebody's wife and you are in trouble for taking someone's wife. And Abimelech had a conversation with God in that dream. He said, will you slay the just as well? Did this man not say to me that he, she's my, that Sarah's his sister? Why would you punish me for that? God said, I know that you are, you are, you are innocent in this matter. That's why I kept you from sinning against me. Now, Abimelech woke up in the morning and then he called Abraham over. Come, 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 come here. So you, Sarah's your wife and you never told me about it? Abimelech used God's name when he was talking. He didn't say, I had a dream. I saw somebody in my dream. I don't quite know who this person is. And he, he said that, um, that the woman that I've taken is not my wife. But actually, that's not what happened. Abimelech said, Adonai. I saw Adonai in my dream. In other words, Abimelech knew of Abraham's God. He had an encounter with Abraham God in the dream. He believed the dream enough to have called Abraham and to confront him about it. Only for him to turn around and continue worshiping his idols. Have you seen Ahimun Binzer? So when we sit down, we talk about fairness and unfairness, God made himself available to all. By even revealing himself to Pharaoh, revealing himself to Abimelech. But did those guys, even though they believed the dream to be coming from God, even though they believed God was real, they didn't just say that God is just Abraham's God, who should listen, you know, I don't care about Abraham's God. No, they listened. They obeyed and yet they did not worship that God. That is the nature of mankind. That's why I think, you know, I think Araba was you, you asked a splendid question about, you know, how can God send people to hell? How can God be, you know, how can he be good? And send people to hell at the same time? The two things don't sort of adapt. Actually, there, no innocent person will ever go to hell. Anybody that ends up in hell, not only will he be guilty, he will know that he's guilty. I've worked in prisons a few, you know, on a few occasions and it's a very interesting place to work. Because you will find hundreds, in some cases hundreds, because some of the prisons are quite big, hundreds of prisoners. And very few of them believe that they are guilty of any offense. You talk to any one of them, they are innocent. Somebody framed them. The judge didn't believe my story. They believe the other person's story. Everybody is innocent. Nobody believes, of course, some of them believe, but they are just lying. The difference in heaven is this. You will know, I know heaven is already hell. The people who end up in hell, in eternal judgment, they will know that they are wrong. They will know all the instances that God gave them an opportunity and they turned it away. Somebody was talking about the painful deaths of atheists and not just atheists, because that sort of maybe is not right, you know, that's not put in the right. God hates us, people who hate God. They go to the very last breath cursing God. They said that it used to happen so often that voices recorded in the black box, you know, when every plane has something called a black box that records conversations, records, you know, technical faults of the plane, everything. So that if something happens, the black box can be retrieved. Then they can analyze the data in the black box to determine what happened. But one of the things the black box, the black box records is also the conversations of the pilots. And what they discovered, they, they, that repeatedly, many of them at the very last minute, when they were facing death, instead of crying out to God, oh Lord, help us, they were cursing God. They were cursing God. Very few people, I'd say very few people, nobody will stand before the judgment throne of God and say, this is unfair. You are sending me to a place that I don't deserve to be in. I'm a good person. Nobody will be able to say that before God. Anybody that will end up there, they will know that they turned down opportunities, not one, not two, multiple opportunities to make peace with God and they chose a different path. There are people who, who even tell you, even if they are offered to go to the goal, they won't go to heaven. They have a vendetta against God. So I thought I should throw that in. It's something that's really, a question that's really bugging many people in our day and age. Our day and age is really struggling with multiple issues. On one hand, you have immorality everywhere. On the other hand, you have man-made new form of morality by which people want to now hold God. Who God, God's feet to the fire, as it were, as if he's not the originator of all forms of morality. We also said that God's special relationship with Israel doesn't mean that he, he, how do I put it? He overlooked their faults, their mistakes. He said that God actually winked at the failings of Gentile nations. Gentile nations that were worshiping idols non-stop, didn't get judgment, instant judgment upon themselves because of what they were doing. But Israel, each time they went into idolatry, they faced consequences. So, and then God said that, look, you are my people, therefore I will punish you more severely. I will hold you to higher standards. And that also, I don't think many people remember that. It's so important to remember that. A point was raised by one of you regarding what's going on in the Middle East right now and yeah, so a point was raised about what's going on in the Middle East right now. And there are obviously Christians that are coming out boldly saying, well, you know, which side God is on, you know? Um, I can't tell you whose side God is on in every single conflict that Israel gets involved in. There will be times when Israel is wrong, even though I still believe they are God's people. Why? Because in Romans, all right, that they are God, has God forsaken his people? Then he says, no, God hasn't forsaken his people. So I believe that they are still God's people. Okay? But God's people don't get away with murder. God's people don't get away with every evil thing that they do because they are God's people. So if they are doing something wrong, yes, they must be held accountable for what they are doing. It's not like they can get away with it. No more than you and I can get away with the things that we do wrong. So they will be held accountable for what they do. But before anybody judges Israel on their current conduct, on the way they are handling the whole issue, it's important to, to actually do some research. Find out about this nation, Israel, how it came into existence. You know, the Barfau Declaration, et cetera, et cetera. Go and study the history, study the history of the land before Israel, you know, before that declaration was made in 1947. Go and study all of that and you will discover, I mean, it will help you to interpret current events. If you just look narrowly at what's happening, then it's so easy to just conden, you know, Israel and what they're doing. But there's a need to study what's going on and to put it in the context. I haven't said that, as I said, I cannot exonerate them. I cannot say, you know, you are God's people, so go ahead and do whatever you want. No. If they're breaking God's commandment in what they're doing, you will be held accountable. Bless everybody. God is not a respecter of persons. So today, what we are going to be talking about is how God extended his covenant with Abraham to Abraham's sons and then onto Israel as a nation. Now, let's go through the slide. God's special relationship with Abraham was extended to Isaac, Jacob and Israel as a nation. And God has said of Abraham, I have known him in order that he may command his children and his household after him, that they keep the way of the Lord to do righteousness and justice, that the Lord may bring to Abraham what he has spoken to him. That's Genesis chapter 18 verse 19. So some versions, I think the King James Version says, for I know Abraham, that he will command his children. Whereas many other versions is, I have known him in order that he may command his children. It's because the Hebrew language is so rich and sometimes you can derive different, you know, rendering or you can derive into different interpretations from the same, the same passage. Either way, it's still valid. Here it says, God is saying, I have chosen him with this in mind. I want him to also instruct his children and his whole household to keep the way of the Lord, to do righteousness and justice, so that the Lord may bring to Abraham what he has spoken to him. What God is saying is, I have made some promises to Abraham. But those promises are also contingent upon Abraham teaching his children my ways. And if Abraham teaches his children my ways, it will then make it possible for me to fulfill the word that I gave to Abraham. Which tells you one thing, even though God made a promise and made a covenant with Abraham, that covenant could not have been kept if Abraham had, or that promise could not have been kept if Abraham hadn't fulfilled this part. This is very important. Because what was the covenant about? Really, the covenant was about the Messiah. When God appeared to Abraham and called him out, he had more than a plot of land in the Middle East in mind. God had his mindset on the Messiah who would come through Abraham's line. So the idea was that Abraham would pass on all the instructions, the revelations that God had given him to his children, that his children may also pass it on to their children and for that to continue until the coming of the Messiah. Why? Because the Messiah, trust me or not, Messiah also had to be instructed in the ways of the Lord. Why? Because the Messiah himself would be human. When God appeared to Mary and Joseph, he knew what he was doing. He didn't just choose any couple, any old couple. He chose a godly couple. A couple that would instruct baby Jesus in the ways of the Lord. Because much as he was God in the flesh, he had taken on human flesh. Which means, which means he was subject to the same limitations that you and I are subject to. A three-year-old doesn't know his left from his right. Has to be taught. And, and Mary and Joseph had the responsibility of teaching baby Jesus. The Bible says, when he was 12, he knew so much scripture, he could challenge the very Pharisees, the very religious leaders, the teachers. He could debate with them in the temple so that his parents left him travel the day's journey without him and not realize that they were missing him. Because this guy was so engrossed in, in, in enjoying the word of God and enjoying the debate with the word of God. But the Bible says, when his parents came and found him, they said, son, what have you done to us? But did you not know that I would be about my father's business? It sounds almost like a cheeky answer, a cheeky response. What was basically saying that, did you not know where you would find me? You know just how much I love the word of God. You know just how much I, I, I wouldn't pass up an opportunity to discuss things of God. So if you were looking for me, did you not know where you would find me? Of course, this is the place where you would find me. But after that encounter, what the Bible says is, he went back and he submitted to Mary and Joseph. And, and submitted to their tutelage, to their upbringing until the right time, the time of his showing to Israel. So God chose Abraham as an Abraham, Mary and Joseph for a reason. He had a task in mind. Imagine that Jesus had been born to some drunken parents who were woke up in the morning, you know, lying down in their own vomit, not knowing where the children, whether the children have been fed or whether not caring to teach them the ways of the Lord, et cetera. Imagine that Jesus had had that kind of upbringing. God chose Mary and Joseph for a reason. And here God says, I have chosen Abraham. Because I know that this man will do this job. He will pass on my instructions, my statutes, my commands, my judgment. He will pass them on to his descendants. And by doing so, he will pave the way for me to fulfill the promise that I gave to him. So there's a succession there and that succession is so important. It didn't matter just how faithful Abraham was. If Abraham didn't manage to train Isaac to be a godly man, the chain could be broken, could have been broken right there. The baton was passed on from Isaac to Jacob. We know that Isaac had two sons, Jacob and Esau. Jacob was the one whom the Lord chose. The Lord had already promised right from the outset. Again, we can hear talk about his God, pasha, his God, you know, the gospel favoritism. Here you have two brothers, twins, born of the same parents. And their parent was the very man, their father was the very man whom God had chosen to carry the torch from Abraham, to receive the torch from Abraham. So you could argue they had the same beginnings, Jacob and Esau, born on the same day, just minutes apart. You couldn't say they had the same DNA because they were not identical twins. But there are lots and lots in common. But God saw ahead of time, he saw which of these two would respond to him. And he opened his arm to the one that responded to him. Now, I believe that he did not ignore Esau completely. Now, I believe that he did not ignore Esau completely. As a matter of fact, when you read the Bible, and you, you do a study of Idom's, Idom's descendants, we call the Idomites. You will see that God protected them, gave them a place, you know, the place where the Idomites settled. It's in modern-day Jordan, in an area called Petra. In that, that, in that, go, that place used to be inhabited by giants. And Bible says that God gave. The Idomites, you know, the strength to overcome these giants. So I don't believe that God just thought, I choose Jacob, forget about Esau, I don't care about him. You've got to remember that the Old Testament account narrows down really, really. On, and, and the focus is all on Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, and that line. So he doesn't spend a lot of time discussing God's personal interactions with people outside of this line. But let's not make an assumption that God ignored the others. An example would be, an example of somebody that God, who wasn't an Israelite, but wasn't ignored. It'd be Job. We read the story of Job, obviously, he was a man of the east, so he was clearly not from the promised land. And yet he had a relationship with God. You read about Balaam. Balaam was also a man of the east. And unfortunately, I mean, this man had the ability to hear from God, to hear very, very, very clearly from God. To prophesy God's word, even though he was not part of Israel. So clearly, God was interacting with people outside of Israel. So I believe that he didn't forsake Esau. But Esau didn't respond to him. Jacob did. It took him a while, but he did. We know that the key moment for Jacob was when he left home. He ran away from home, and why did he have to run away from home? Because he had stolen his brother's, um, blessing. First of all, he tricked the brother into selling his birthright, and then afterwards, he, you know, stole the blessing. And the brother became very unhappy about this and said, I will wait until, you know, one of these days. My father looks like, you know, he's on his last legs, he will die version, and I will kill this guy. When Rebecca heard about it, and by the way, she was the one that engineered the whole, you know, stealing of blessing and everything, she was the mastermind behind it. When she, she heard, you were heard, you know, Esau talking about how he was going to kill Jacob, she said, come here, I'll send you back to your uncle's house. Go and stay there for a while, until I send word for you, until I, I inform you that, you know, I give you the all clear. That's probably what I'm saying. So Jacob ran away from home. On the way, he stopped over at a place called Luz. And lay down to sleep, and whilst he was asleep, he saw a dream. And the dream, he saw a ladder, reaching all the way to the heavens from the air, and angels going up and down that ladder. And at the very top of that ladder, the Lord Almighty seated. And the Lord made a promise to Jacob, saying, I am the Lord, God of Abraham, your father, and the God of Isaac. The land of which, on which you lie, I will give to you and your descendants. Also, your descendants shall be as the dust of the earth. You shall spread abroad to the west and the east, and to the north and the south. And in you and in your seed, all the families of the earth shall be blessed. Behold, I am with you, and I will keep you wherever you go, and I will bring you back to this land. For I will not leave you until I have done what I have spoken to you. Genesis chapter twenty-eight, verses thirteen to verse fifteen. So here, Jacob has done something wrong. He's running away from his brother. And if you ask me, what this man really needed was a rebuke, not a promise. But look at what God did. He appeared in a dream and repeated the blessing that he had already pronounced over Abraham's name. Remember that Jacob had worked hard to obtain the blessing, the, the father's blessing. He was trying to be the firstborn. And what was he trying to be? Because God had revealed to Rebecca that the, the older shall serve the younger. That Esau, even though he was the older, he would end up serving Jacob. Now, when God reveals something to you like that, never jump to conclusion about what it means. It doesn't necessarily always mean that, that in, that all of that will happen, would happen in one generation. God may have been talking about eventually what would happen to the descendants of these two groups. But Rebecca saw this as, wait, if this boy is, is supposed to serve this one. Then this one that's supposed to be serving can't be the one to receive the father's blessing. In those days, those blessings were a big deal. When the blessings came, all the pronouncements and, and essentially, you know, um. They, they inheritance, everything. So guess what? She cooked up that plan with Jacob, to steal that blessing. Jacob got this blessing, but he couldn't stay at home. He had bought his brother's birthright. So really, he had a right to the blessing, if you like, if you want to be technical about it. And then he had to run away from home. Imagine that you've worked, you've tricked your way into, into some possession, but you can't actually keep it. You can't actually enjoy it, you have to run away. He ran away. And at that point, if I were God, Jacob would have gotten a rebuke. That's what he would have gotten for, because, look, he'd messed up, well, if you mess that, well, what do you expect? I would have just given him a rebuke, I'd just said, look, you, that's not how you do things, that's not how you treat people. That's very, very bad. Even if I'm going to bless you, I, I, I rebuke you first. That's me. That's not what God did. He revealed himself as the God of Abraham and God of Isaac. And said, uh, essentially, he was saying, look, I will be your God too. Because as far as God was concerned, he could see in this man. Someone that he could strike a deal for the long term. God had you and me in mind, when he was striking a, a covenant with this man. It's so important. The things that God does, he has the long term in mind. If he was just thinking about the short term, he would have just dealt with the issue, the, the so-called injustice in front of him. But he was thinking about the long term. I also believe that the Lord knew that this, this Jacob, he's going to get the, the punishment that he needs. In his uncle's house. Because if you follow that story very carefully, he arrived in his uncle's house, and the next thing that, you know. Even before he arrived there, he fell in love. He saw a lady, you know, and, and fell in love. Kissed the lady contrary to the cultural practices of the time, before he even got to meet the parent. And as soon as he arrives, and look, I'm ready to marry your daughter. And the uncle being a very shrewd guy, he said, ah, you want to marry my daughter? You've come empty-handed. You know the culture here, you, you've got to come with a bride price. When Abraham spent Eliezer, his servant, to go out and find a bride for Isaac. He loaded him with riches. Come my house, there was a whole caravan. Act with jewelry, with, you know, gold and all sorts of goodies. And here Jacob had run away from home. If he were, if he were going to get married, he would have come with a caravan, but then. Esau would have known he was running away. He had to get away quickly, so he ran. He himself said, I left with just my staff in my hand. So he arrived in his uncle's house empty-handed, and then he said, I want to marry. And my son, okay, here's how we're going to do it. You're going to serve me for seven years. After seven years, I'll give you my daughter. How about that? Jacob said, deal. He didn't even think. His father was one of the richest men in the whole land. You know, bride price, big deal. All he had to do was just wait. He couldn't wait. Inability to delay gratification. I must have it, and I have it now. You know, many of us think that Esau was the only one that had that problem. You know, Esau came back from work one day hungry. You know, they were, they were, in those days, they always had dried fruit, they had cheese, they had produce in the, at home all the time. So there was something to eat, but he could smell that, that lentil soup. We thought, I have to have some. To the point that this guy, his brother said, look, you can only have some of my soup or my stew. In fact, I'll have your birthright. He said, deal. I don't care. Just give me the stew. He ate it and he went his way. He ate and he went his way, and he despised his birthright. Well, guess what? Jacob also had a problem. He saw Rachel and he couldn't handle it. He couldn't handle his hormones anymore. And he struck a deal to mortgage seven precious years of his life. So he did. After seven years, J. Lebant thought, I shall teach you a lesson. Gave him someone else, gave him a sister to marry instead. So that Jacob ended up serving Lebant for fourteen years, just to have a wife. And then afterwards, he served another six years, so he would have some substance. He came out of Lebant's house, rich, but it was still nothing compared to what he would have had. Had he stayed at home, had he not done the things that he had done. In all of this, God was faithful. In all of this, God was faithful. Our, our, our wonderful God, what did he do? He kept him, he kept his covenant with him. He, he protected David because, I said, David, Ja- Jacob. Lebant tried to cheat him many times. But the Lord kept him from doing so. In the end, Jacob grew richer than Lebant. God brought him out of the land and kept him. Why? Because he had a covenant with Abraham. And that covenant carried weight, that covenant had implications for the whole earth. If that covenant with Abraham had failed, whether it had failed on Isaac and it failed on Jacob, it doesn't matter if he had failed. It would have meant no plan B. God had to wipe everybody and to start all over again. God's redemption plan hung upon these men. So when God called, when God called Moses Mansina and said, I am the God of Abraham. Isaac and Jacob, he knew what he was talking about. These guys laid the foundation for what he was about to do. So I really encourage you to spend time studying the lives of these men. Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob laid the foundation. And, and there's much to be learned about God's nature from studying the lives of these men, their interactions with God. Spend time to do this. It pays to do this. Spend time to understand, because God said, I am the God of these men. It means there's something that he revealed about his nature in his interactions with his men. Unless you don't learn anything else, you learn grace. You will learn the grace of God. Not that he could have given Jacob what he deserved. The Bible says that when Jacob left Lebant's house. He was very frightened because he knew, I have just escaped one trouble. But potential disaster lies ahead. Esau was coming to beat him with four hundred horsemen. Armed. And he remembered what he had done to Esau twenty years earlier. He knew his game was up. He knew things were going to, things could get dicey. The smart and shrewd guy that he was, Jacob sent servants ahead of himself. With gifts. Go, sheep, camels, go, go and bribe them, go and bribe them for me. The guy said, what do I, I don't need any of this, and the guy kept coming. And when he heard that the guy hadn't, you know, received a present or whatever. He was just frightened. The Bible says, the night before he met his brother. He sent his family across the brook, I think it was Jabok. He sent them over the, you know, across the brook, and then he stayed behind. Such an interesting moment. He knew that, look, I have been full of chicken. I have always been able to, to wiggle my way out of difficult situations. But this one was very difficult. How do I get out of this? How do I get out of this? My brother is coming, there's no other way. And if you study the geography of the land, you will understand. To get to the promised land from where he was coming from, Padan Aron. He had to go through what we call the Golan Heights. So you go up towards Syria, then you turn through the Golan Heights, and then you come towards Israel. And as you're doing that, you're going through a very manginous area, and you are vulnerable. Because your enemy could be coming at you from any, 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 any angle. You're just walking in that valley and you're, you're vulnerable. So this guy was just coming and just thinking, the jig is up. There's nowhere to escape to, the guy is coming. And that night, the guy who always had a solution, the guy who always had a way out. He knew his game was up. He prayed. Jacob's prayer at that time was very, very interesting. He, he approached God and said, look, I am afraid, I am scared that this man will even slaughter the children. Would slaughter my children. And whilst he was lying down. This would have been the moment when God should have appeared to him in that glamorous appearance at Bethel. You remember when he was lying down at Beth- Bethel, a place called Luz? He saw a dream, there were angels going up and down the ladder. And the Lord spoke from heaven. That was the kind of encounter that Jacob would have appreciated in this difficult moment. It's not like us, and sometimes when we, in our, in our darkest moments, we want God to show himself as the God that answered by fire. We don't want any fable showing. The Bible says, whilst he was lying down, unable to sleep, probably tossing and turning. A man came and wrestled him. I mean, that's, if, if you don't learn anything about God, oh, take your time to study this encounter. The encounter at Penel. A man came to wrestle him. It's like God, all the different ways that you could have chosen to manifest yourself at that moment, in that trying moment. He chose to just come as a man. And the man, instead of coming now, sitting down and just having a conversation with him, saying, look, everything is going to be all right. I know you're scared of your brother, but everything is going to be all right. Instead of doing, that's not what God did do. That's not what God did. He came and started wrestling the guy. Some people believe he's an angel, other people believe it's, it's God. I don't believe it's an angel. If you go and study encounters with angels, they are very different. You know, Gabriel shows up and he says, I'm Gabriel. This is different. He doesn't talk. He just wrestles. And that wrestling is supposed to, to open your mind, it's supposed to point you to something. Something that he has been screaming and shouting, but you haven't been hearing him. So now he's coming to you in silence, and he's going to wrestle you in silence. You're going to want a word from him, but he's not going to say anything. Because now he needs you to hunger and thirst for his word before he will drop it. Because he, you've been giving him the runaround. He was chasing you and you were not interested. Fourteen years, you were only interested in getting married. You had met him, and he said, I will be with you. I will establish my covenant with you. I have plans for your life. But you set that aside because your hormones were raging and you just had to settle yourself. Now you settled yourself. Now you've got the cattle and the sheep that you wanted. But you discovered that actually, even though you've got all of that, there's something missing. To face your own brother is a problem. Because though you have acquired the material wealth, you've acquired what, what the pride of men. Spiritually, you are. There's nothing inside. There's nothing to lean upon. The Bible tells us that when, when David was in a dark moment and his people wanted to stone him. Because the Amalekites had raided their village in Zikla. And, and they, they somehow, they needed to, to find an, um. They needed to vent. So they decided to make David the scapegoat. The Bible says, David encouraged himself in the Lord. Do you know what that means? He was not bankrupt. He was not spiritually bankrupt. He had something he had been building with God over the years. So in the difficult moment, he had something to lean. Brothers and sisters. There was a Bible passage that say, there's a Bible that says that if your strength fails in adversity, your strength is little. And I used to meditate on that passage. I said, what does that mean? Yeah, I mean, my strength fails in adversity. Of course it's in adversity that my strength is going to fail. And then he don't know me, that adversity doesn't come out of nowhere. Before adversity comes. Split children, its smaller children will be sent down your way. The Bible says, God is faithful who will not let you be tempted more than you can bear. So little challenges will come your way. And when they come your way, you're supposed to use your faith to overcome them. So that in the day of adversity, you already built up. So when David was being chased by Saul every day and night, and he was building himself in the Lord. The Bible says, you know, I, I think it's, it's not some two, maybe some three or some five, but you know, first, definitely between some three and some five. David says, Lord, how are they increased that trouble me? Many are they that rise up against me. Many are they who say of my soul. There is no hope for you in God. And thou, oh God, had a shield for me. Thou, oh God, had a shield for me. David lied to lean on God in those moments when Saul was chasing him. So when his friends gathered and were going to betray him and were ready to stone him. He encouraged himself in the Lord. It's wonderful when you are in difficulty and your brother picks up a phone and phones you and encourages you. But that may not happen. And you encourage yourself in the Lord. And you build yourself in your most holy faith, so that in the moment of difficulty, you can simply draw on the reserves. That you have accumulated over the years. To encourage yourself in the Lord. Jacob was lying by the brook Jabok. And was bankrupt. Because he had spent twenty years chasing the things of his life. He had neglected his relationship with God. And the Lord came to show him that. But instead of a dream. It was a wrestling match. Instead of words of encouragement, it was a wrestling match. Dawn approached. The Lord needed a response from this man. He had been giving him the runaround for twenty years and he needed a response. The Lord said, let me go. The guy said, I won't let you go unless you bless me. Ah, unless you bless me. Why don't you guys pause and ask yourself, at that moment, was there a time to be asked me for a blessing? He had cattle, he had sheep, he had goats, he had everything. Wives. servants. concubines. He had everything that people chase after. Bless me. Because he realized. That in spite of all of that, he didn't feel blessed. Something was missing. Your greatest blessing is in your relationship with God. Where your blessing is. Everything that you own can be taken away. Everything that you own. People that I love lost everything overnight in Ukraine. They had to run away. Barely survived. Are they shaking their faith? No. I speak to them, they are still flourishing. They are rejoicing. I never had to encourage them. They were building on the rock. Because when you build on the rock, the storms may come. And shake the building. But if it's on the rock, it does not. But if you've been building the camp of Christianity that says, me and Ogo suffer. And no go beg for bread. Where you go to church because God will bless you. When the storms come. And they hit against your house and they will. Well, come on, you have nothing to stand on. Here Jacob was saying, bless me. Oh, so you are not blessed? I thought you had all the blessings. He neglected what matters in life. Then the Lord asked him a question. What's your name? I love the Lord because he doesn't waste words. You know, if God can say something in three words, eh, he's not going to say it in fifteen sentences. What's your name? Tell me. As if he didn't know the guy's name. He said, Jacob. The supplanter, the deceiver. He said, your name will no longer be Jacob. Your name will be Israel. For as the prince, you have power both with man and with God. You have been doing trickery here and there. No man, you are like that cat whose back can't ta- won't touch the ground. You always land on your feet. You've been doing this. You will not even wrestle and wrestle me. But before he left. And dislocated it. What was the significance of that? Why did God do something like that? To understand it, you need to go back to what I said earlier. He was feeling vulnerable because he was going to meet his brother. And you should study that, those scriptures very carefully from Genesis chapter twenty-eight onwards. Jacob's life, what will you discover? The guy was full of trickery. Sent presents ahead of himself to try and appease his brother. When that didn't work, do you know what he did? He divided his, his, um, his camp into companies. Different groups. And then he was in the last group. The servants and the concubines and their children, those ones went ahead. So that if Esau was angry and wanted to kill somebody, he sacrificed those ones. He didn't send Joseph. That he loved in the first company. No. The sons of the, of the concubines, those were the ones ahead. Together with their mothers. Then the last, but one, but that's where Rachel was, his beloved Rachel. And then he himself, you go to the distance between, so that if all of you guys die. Let me spare my life. That was Jacob. Fallen nature. God said, eh. So that's what you, you see there's some things that God won't tell you. He won't say anything. He'll just do one thing. I still in the hole of his heart, he tries. How are you going to run away from Esau now? Tell me. The Bible says, he went limping as he was going to meet Jacob, to Esau. Now he was most vulnerable. All his defenses had been taken away. And what had they been taking away? To teach him that the Lord is the one watching over you. The Lord promised, I will keep you. That's what he said at Bethel. God almost forced this guy to believe. His word. And as he went limping. He went limp, he knew he was in trouble. He saw Esau in the distance. And he went and bowed before the guy. And he called him my lord. His third brother. My lord. He said, looking at you is like looking at the face of an angel. Shouting words of flattery. So that he would spare his life. Esau said, what is the meaning of all those sheep that you sent ahead? What was that all about? He said, oh, I have plenty. Eh, this is just to bless you. And this has, no, no, no. I also have plenty where I'm coming from. Don't forget that you run away from whom? You run away from the inheritance. You collected my, my, the, my blessing. But those inheritors ended up with me because you were not there. Plenty. Esau said. And then Esau said, Esau hugged him. And kissed him. In other words, God had gone ahead of Jacob. To prepare Esau's heart. But Jacob could not believe. That God had his back. One of the things that David said in that psalm, and I think it's Psalm three, um, you know, when I'm on the spotlight that I, I, my memory just fails me. I'm not able to remember things that correctly. I'm sure I just step away and then I'll remember exactly which psalm it is. I think it's Psalm three. But David says, I will lay me down. And sleep. Or I lay me down and slept. That's old English. I lay down and slept. No, I lay me down and slept. I awoke. So the Lord sustained me. You know, when you read these things politically, you just think, oh, what a lovely statement, then you go away. Do you know what he was talking about? He was running away from Saul. Saul was pursuing him. And Saul came within an inch of killing him. And David said, in the midst of all of that. I lay down and I slept. I had a found. That doesn't come easy unless you have a relationship. Unless you've trained yourself to trust in the Lord. That was something Jacob hadn't trained himself. That's why he failed miserably. But you know what? The Lord in his mercy, the Lord in his compassion said, you must learn this lesson. If you want to walk with me, you must learn this lesson. Everybody that wants to walk with God must learn this lesson. That if I say I've got your back. I mean it. And you must trust me. When you're afraid, when you don't have your, eh, eh, anything, eh, eh, there's nobody that you think has got your back. When you have no defenses. Learn to lean on me. For that is what it means to be a child of God. To be a child of God is to, is to have a father in heaven that you can count on, that you can trust in, in times of difficulty. You hang on to him, you hang on to every word of his. That's what it means to be a child of God. Jacob had to learn the hard way. He had to be forced to learn. Twenty years in Lebanon's house didn't teach him. He had his, his, his pride had to be, his hip had to be put out of joint. So that he would eventually rely. To submit. To the grace of God. And to walk with God. It would have been lovely. To end this whole account by saying, you know, from that moment, his life changed. Something changed in him. There is no question about that. He became more sober. But. Not quite. When Jacob left there. You know, his brother offered to escort him into the promised land. Jacob said, oh, you know what? He still didn't believe that his brother, that God had actually been there to protect him. So he said to his brother, no worry, no, well, you go ahead, we will, you know, we'll get there because, you know, we have young ones. We don't want to push them too hard and you know the animals as well. We don't want to move too fast, so we'll take our time. And you know what he did? He branched. His father was living in the south. You have been away from your father for all this long. You've arrived in the promised land. Go to the south, be a sheba where your father is. No, that's not where he went. He went and pitched a tent near Shem. Or Shakem. Today it's called Nablus and it's part of, you know, Palestinian controlled territory. Nablus. Or Shakem. The English pronunciation. He went and settled there. In the north. I went, why? Because his brother was also in the south. And he wanted to be far away from there because he was still limping. Spiritually. And physically. He could still not trust. He could still not believe. So that when he was at Shem, Shem, that's where his daughter Diana. Or Diana, rather. Was violated. By the prince. Of that city. And his two sons, Liva and Simon, decided to execute vengeance. And slay all the men after tricking them to get circumcised. So much so that Jacob had to run away from that area. Because, obviously, the Shemites had allies. So he had to run away. And the Lord told him, go back to Bethel. And erect an altar to the God who appeared to Liva. Got to bring back to where he had been twenty-something years earlier or even thirty-something years ago. And then. He learned the twenty-something years more, more accurately. And there, he rekindled his relationship with God. And I believe that it is from there that you begin to see proper transformation in the life of Jacob. So when God says, I am the God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. What he's saying is, in these three men. I spent time to educate them. I spent time to nurture them. I spent time to show the rest of the world my nature. We see God's parenting skills, how he will be patient, but he would also allow you to go through some difficulty. Especially when you are not willing to listen. But in all this, he's there to protect. He's there to guide. That's why it's so important to learn about the lives of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. They tell us something about the nature of God. So. What we've been saying so far? And for those of you that, you know, um, are new, let me just check who has joined us. Yes, so I can see a new face. Shiloh, um, and I can also see Jesse. Welcome back. So, um, welcome to all of you. And, um. What we tend to do is after, you know, the main session, we then have a discussion. Um, and it's an opportunity for you to share what you've learned, to ask questions, to make contributions, et cetera. So before we come to that, let me just quickly summarize what we've been talking about. We've been talking about the God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. We've been talking about the nature of God. We've been talking about the watershed moments in the history of mankind. The fact that God finding Abraham was a key moment. It was the moment when, if you like, God started a relationship, a very intimate relationship with. A representative of the human race, because that's really what Abraham was. A rep- he was, he was there on our behalf. And because of his relationship with God, just as God's relationship with Noah meant. That he could save the human race. So also God's relationship with Abraham provided the platform upon which he could save the human race. Because of Abraham. You and I have salvation. Because Jesus came. As a descendant of Abraham. He said Abraham's covenant was extended to Isaac and to Jacob. And subsequently, we will talk about God's dealings with Israel. So. We'll stop here. And see if you have any contributions, any questions that you want to share with us. Who wants to go first? Okay, I have, oh, Shiloh, good.
Yeah. So, um, I think for me, my take takeaway for today is how. Um, the insights you've given about, um, Jacob actually. And his encounters, um. Um, I think actually his encounter with the angel. And where he is spiritually, and also highlighting the fact that. Um, he wasn't spiritually there yet. Because that is, when, when I look at Jacob, I always saw him as. Um, apart from him being the deceiver, that he was in the favor of, he was in the. In alignment with God, by the way you've explained it now, how, I can relate to it. About my journey with Christ as well, of where he's taking me and the ups and downs. He, he hasn't left me, that he is with me, and, um, also to even be able to watch certain things as they come along. Because God is trying to point me in certain direction he wants me to take. So that is my take for today.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. And, um. Yes, Jacob is an example for, you know, um. He is like, we are all like Jacob. We all, we've all got our issues, we've all, nobody, nobody walks in the straight line. Everybody has his imperfections. And the story of Jacob tells us how patient God is with his children. If God, if God realizes that there is faith in this one. You know, you remember the story of Moses, Moses's mother. The Bible says that. Pharaoh had issued a decree, all, you know, male children, newly born males had to be slaughtered. And going against the king's decree would have come with, you know, consequences. But Moses's mother, Jacob, she thought, not this one. Not this one, I can see something in this child. I must preserve him, and she was preserving the destiny of the whole nation. Likewise, God looks at you, looks at me, and he says. I must preserve this, I can see his mistakes. I can see his ups and downs. He's failed me more times than I can even count. But I can see there is a desire in him. Or a desire in her. To get to something. And because of that, I must preserve him or her. Because of that, I must guide him. I will be patient with him because I can see the end. That's how it is, God can see the end from the beginning. He knows where your life is going and therefore he's patient with you. So the story of Jacob is, you know, it has carried many lessons for us. Thank you for your contribution. Who wants to go next?
Okay, good evening to everyone. Okay, I have a simple question, well, not simple, like a very short question. Why is it that sometimes evil seems to thrive for a long time? Um, I'm asking, um, in light of what, how, what Jacob had to go through with Laban, you know? That it had. At, at one point, it almost seemed like, like Laban had won or had the upper hand. Why is that sometimes it has to carry so long?
Okay. Good question, and the answer is actually quite easy. If you, you know, if you study that story very, very carefully, you'll discover that it went on for so long. Not because of God, but because of Jacob, you know? The, the choices that Jacob made meant that he kept prolonging his agony. Sometimes the fears. The things that you are afraid of in life, you know what Job said, the thing I fear the most has come up. The fears. That you have are responsible very often for prolonging your agony. Because when the calamity comes, instead of. Resting in God. Drawing from his strength. Speaking out in faith. Taking the steps that God wants you to take. You allow the calamity to essentially move you along. You become responsive to the problems. Rather than you, you know, rather than being in charge, rather than getting to see things from God's perspective and being in charge. The problem starts directing you about. And that's what prolongs agony, the suffering for many people. I've been through it, you know, I know what I'm talking about. There were problems that, you know, dragged on for a long time in my life, and when I go back and look. It had nothing to do with God and his readiness to deliver me. It had everything to do with my understanding. Of what was going on. Very often we have little understanding, and we don't have understanding because we are so bent on. Chasing the next thing in front of us. So the devil just keeps things, throwing things, because, you know, just like a dog that, you know, you throw a, a, a stick and then it runs after it fetch, you know? Because you, you're not looking at the bigger picture, you're not seeing what's going on. That can prolong your agony. Jacob stepped into Laban's house and he made the first mistake by signing a contract with this man. And not vision, seven years of his life. When you are, God is a God, God is a covenant keeper. You don't go and sign a contract with somebody and then say, God, uh, what, what is God supposed to do? You've signed a contract. He would want you to keep your word. So it was Jacob's own doing. Then when Laban cheated him and gave him the woman that he hadn't, you know? The woman he wasn't expecting to marry. Instead of going back to God and saying, Lord, look at what has happened, this man has cheated me, what do you think I should do? Frankly. Listened more to his body than to God. His desire to be with Rachel was far more important to him than anything else. So. Jacob prolonged his agony. So I don't know if that answers your question, but, you know, everybody's situation will be different. But there are multiple factors there, and I hope I have outlined some of them.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Good. Who wants to go next?
Good evening.
Evening, good evening, everyone.
Today, I didn't want to say anything, I really, I have really enjoyed this session. Um, the insight into the story of Jacob is amazing. I have never, you know, when you talk about the fact that, um. You know, God, the angel of, God, angel.
Some people say angel, some people say, I believe it's God, but if you want to call it angel, it's fine.
Yeah, you know, such is capable, you know, this located, and that made him vulnerable. You know, and, you know, it's like he was so selfish. And thinking about only himself, he thought that maybe he, because of his traditional. Lifestyle, no, you know, he, he can go around anything. At this time, God showed him the fact. So I was just thinking, I said, okay, God. It means that, you know, when God is trying to get your attention, or try, wants you to do something, then you're just playing around it in circles. And you think that you have strength, you can do this, you can lie around it, you can do this. God can touch you in a way that. You, you, you mellow, and that for me is so, you know, like, I even, there is a lesson in the angel. To be like, actually, uh, yeah. Because sometimes when God is trying to get attention, oh, there are things that we shouldn't think that we are doing by our own strength or our own. Like God, we have to consult God in certain things. Not everything, you know, but it's most things, like when you are taking major decisions. And looking at Jacob's life, you see that he, he thought that he could do everything by himself. And no, that you, you know, you see people go, you know, and. You know, I was laughing, when you were saying this, I said, yeah, this name Jacob. You know, our brother Jacob, our brother Jacob, one day, one day our sister Ivy told me. I don't know if this has affected, it's amazing. But, oh, today is amazing, the insight, God bless so much, I have really enjoyed. I didn't want to say anything, you know, but you mentioned my name. It means everyone, uncle, church.
God bless you, God bless you too. Who wants to go next?
I actually have a question.
Good, good, please, yeah.
Um, when you were answering one of the questions, you did talk about covenant and that God is a covenant-keeping God.
Yes.
And so. Since we also sometimes make covenant, and if you make a covenant and you realize that. Um, you've made a mistake somewhere, or it's something you will not be able to keep to, what do you do?
Okay, very good question. So that is the wonderful thing about being in a relationship with God. Is that he can enter your situation and he can make things work out for you. So if you've entered into a wrong agreement with someone, um, of course, um, there are some agreements that, you know, like, for example, marriage. That it's, it's a different kind of story. So, you know, I, I, I don't want this to be sort of, um, understood, that can apply to every single agreement. But there are some, let's say you signed a wrong business deal, or you, you know, you promised to help somebody. Or to do something for someone, and you are not realizing that, hmm. I think I was a bit rash, I, I, I probably shouldn't have said that. What do I do? You just go to God in prayer. And, and you speak to him and say, Lord, I think I made a rash promise there. Give me wisdom in this particular situation to know how to handle it. Now, when you have made that prayer, you must then believe that he is going to be with you. Now, from that moment, you continue to do what is, you know, what you're supposed to do, what you're, you know, what is required of you, continue. But what I have seen from personal experience, and I've also been in those sort of situations before. Is that he provides opportunities. So for one of the opportunities. The other party comes and says, you know what, I'm beginning to have second thoughts about it. I have experienced it many times. So they say, even though I was bound by a contract, God went and spoke to the other person. Without even me but getting involved, and we were able to then work things out. So the benefit of being a child of God, these are one of the privileges of being a child of God. Is that God can come into your situation because you brought him in. Which is why it was such a big mistake on Jacob's path, that when his uncle tried to cheat him, he didn't take it to God. Instead, he tried to resolve it himself by signing another contract. If you've been tricked into signing a contract, pray to God, surrender that contract to God. And you carry on doing what you're supposed to be doing. He will begin to give you wisdom, you will begin to see opportunities open up for you to be able to break free from it. I've seen it many times. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Good, any others? Hello, Fred.
Yeah. Hello, good evening.
Uh, good evening, I, I suffered, I'll meet himself, but yeah, I think you beat him to it. Yeah, carry on.
I, I didn't know whether I had a question on, not, but. I think after, um, I didn't get her name, but after the lady just spoke. I, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
From what, well, I don't have the definition for covenant. But I want to find out the difference. Because if I talk to you about something, or maybe I, I promise to do something. Is that just a promise or a, a, a vow? And how different is it from covenant?
Okay.
Covenant's kind of, um. Uh, saying, promising something and, and telling yourself that if you do not. You do not do this, um, this kind of implication should come upon you. Or it becomes a covenant if there is a, a, a supreme being, or let me say. A deity involved. And so how different is a promise from a vow and a covenant? Because, okay.
Okay, good. So I, I get it. Now, in the Old Testament. People made covenants, they had covenants by blood and by salt and all sorts of things. But you have to ask yourself one thing, you know, we are, we live in the new covenant, the New Testament days. And therefore we understand things better, or at least we are supposed to. And we always have to take things back to the first principles. First and foremost, why did people strike covenants or, you know, um. Establish covenants between themselves and, and also between them and God? What's the purpose of a covenant? The, the, the letter to the Hebrews actually explains, people, people make an oath. That's to reassure the other party that this one, eh, I am not going to break my word. There's no way I'm going to go against this thing. That's when you make an oath. And I'm starting from there to, you know, to get to covenant. But why would you make an oath in the first place? If you had that character. Such that your yes is your yes. Your no is your no. And everybody knows that this is how you are. Would you ever need to make an oath? So we live in a world where people don't trust each other. Sometimes you have to add something to the yes. And the no, and sometimes it means taking an oath, like when you're in court, um, et cetera, et cetera. It can come in different forms. In other words, you are sealing an agreement between two parties with an extra word. Which if broken, will then attract consequences. Okay, but Jesus said, let your yes be yes and your no be no. Anything on top of that is of the evil. So in our day and age. We should not be making vows and all those, people do it, even in churches, I vow to, usually it's around money, isn't it? Then you make a vow, how much you're going to give to God and things like that. I stopped doing that when I understood. Jesus's teaching on that subject. As a matter of fact, I got myself in trouble by making a vow. I was sitting in church when we were talking about raising money for a new church building. And the person who was doing the fundraising spoke so passionately. And touched me so much that I said, I made a pledge. That I was going to, so pledge is the word I was looking for, I kept using the word vow, but a pledge, I made a pledge. And I was a student. I didn't have a job. I just had a monthly stipend that I was living off of, which was often not enough. To even cater to my primary needs, my basic needs. And yet, because I was sitting there and the message touched me, I decided to make a pledge. As the months went by, I didn't have the money. To, to honor my pledge. And guilt began to stare at me. One day I was praying, and I said, Lord. I don't know what to do with this. I pledged to give you this money. And here I am, I don't have, Lord, show me how I can honor that pledge. And you know what the Lord said? You don't have to. I've given it to you for free, you don't have to, you don't owe me anything. I mean. The money in which that revelation came to me, where the Lord spoke to me, saying, you don't owe me anything, I've, that's fine, I've wiped your slate clean. And it filled me with love, it filled me with, I guess, you're God, it's a good God. He could see a student struggling to make ends meet, and then having to carry this burden on top of that. And he reached out. But you know what? If I was a very religious person, who was hanging on to Old Testament scriptures about how you must honor all your vows. And your pledges. I would not have heard him. But I had learned to soften my heart and to respond to him, so when he spoke, that reached me. And I let go. And I felt free, but it also taught me a lesson. Never to make a pledge, never to promise to give something, or if it's in my hand, I drop it in. If I have the money, I'll give it to you. I am not promising to give you tomorrow's money. Sufficient for the day is the evil thereof. What do you know about tomorrow that you are pledging more tomorrow's money? What do you know about tomorrow that you are pledging more tomorrow's money? You don't know, don't make a pledge. Somebody will tell you that it's of faith. Yeah, you are stretching your faith, no. There are other ways of exercising faith. Don't get yourself in, Jesus taught extensively on this subject. He said, even Proverbs talks about it, he said, if you have made a pledge, don't, don't, don't allow your eyes to get any sleep, make sure you untangle yourself from that situation, Proverbs talks about. And Jesus warned against doing this thing. So my, my suggestion to you, don't even go down that path. Don't worry about the differences, whether this is a pledge, whether you're, let your yes be yes and let your no be no. Somebody asks for money, you have the money, you give it to him. If you don't have the money, but you think in the future you might have the money, say nothing. When the future time comes and you get the money, go and give it to him. That way, he's not there waiting for you and begrudging you should you not, you know, give them the money. Don't bind yourself with unnecessary agreements. Let your yes be yes and your no be no. Does this answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, thank you too. Good. Fred, do you want to go next? I saw you've tried a couple of times, but others have beaten you to it.
Me now.
Oh, yes, we can hear you now, yeah.
Okay, the first time I think my hands accidentally pressed on it, but the second one, I was I'm trying to help exactly what you have said.
Okay.
Um, yeah, let your yes be yes and your no be no, anything aside this is of the devil, that's what Jesus said.
Yes.
And sadly, um, in modern Christianity, especially within the charismatic movement, um, I don't know whether that is some form of witchcraft or manipulative tactics that, um, our pastors employ. I've seen it so many times, some of them, not all do. Um, they force people into making pledges, they practically force people. And then they come and say, I've witnessed, and they come and tell people the Lord doesn't delight in the pledge of a fool. I've even witnessed them using the story of Ananias and Safira to scare people into later going to indulge in some corrupt, just raise their money. And believing they are going to please God by raising such money to, um, pay off their, um, pledge or whatever. So I think some of these satanic acts, I call them so unequivocally because this certainly God have made me see in the charismatic movement that I believe should change. Especially those of us coming up wanting to serve God, should be very careful about creating bondage for people and worse of all, using God. The only person they can tend to as a one who is angry and could strike them because of money. So I think, um, basically what you said was what I was about to say, don't make pledges.
Amen.
Just be honest. Know your limitation as human, you are not in charge of the future. Do what you want to do from a joyful heart. And, uh, don't believe you have to do something extra with money to compel God to do something for you. If that's what God wants you to do, he will lay it on your heart personally and you should be sensitive to his directives. Thank you.
Amen, 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 that's wonderful, thank you for that. Good, who wants to go next? Jesse, do you want to talk?
Hello.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let me add a quick one to what Fred, yourself and my sister have, you know, brought on board. Just a quick one to add to it. Um, we, we, the New Testament church is in trouble in so many ways, we know that. And, um, this platform is doing us all a lot of good, trying to straighten up some of these. The truth of the matter is, we don't, we are not in a covenant with God. The covenant of the New Testament church is between God and Christ. We are products of the covenant. Now, if you want to make a covenant, as, um, Rabbeinah helped us from the beginning, every covenant is filled with blood. And then there are other covenants. And the covenant is mainly made between a deity and a superior being or a, a stronger person and a lesser person. What has been brought into the church, as we know it now in the charismatics, is that and is mainly involves money, unfortunately, or other forms of entering into a covenant with God, you can't enter into a covenant with God. You check through the Bible, it is God who enters into a covenant with man. Humanity can't enter into a covenant with deity, you don't have what it takes. What we normally do, and it's often practiced, as Rabbeinah touched on, is either a pledge or a vow or a promise. Lord, I promise that if you do this, I will do that and all that, that is not a covenant. It's a pledge or a promise. And I like what Nanas said towards the end, that you see, when we add to this, when you do that, you are stretching your faith. How do you stretch your faith? You don't stretch your faith with money. You don't try to stretch your faith by making a promise, you stretch your faith by dwelling on the word. So all these things that is, you know, massaging the egos of the believer and all that. My brothers and sisters, when God lays something upon your heart and you have the ability to do it, do it. Making the promise to pay it tomorrow, do you know the challenges tomorrow is bringing? You are counting on tomorrow's money to fulfill today's pledge. How do you handle it tomorrow? And then they will square it up and say, God doesn't delight in the, you know, promises of fools and all that. Listen, God knows you even before you make the promise. God loves you even before you thought about doing that thing. You can't please God more than him, you are pleasing him now. You can, it's not in our ability. So we dwell on the messes on God, you see? You don't think that if you so much, God is delighted. Then Christ wouldn't have said, the widow who gave one pint in the church gave more than everyone. What is the heart in what you are doing? If it is service and you want to serve, do you need to pledge before you serve? If it is something you want to contribute, do you need to make a promise before you do that? No, you don't. Christ has set us free so we can serve God in truth. Open up yourself and do it, so long as God is happy with you, you have nothing to worry about. God bless you so.
God bless you too, my brother, thank you for that contribution, thank you. Good, anybody wants to say a last word before we go? Okay. All right, so thank you all for, you know, for coming and for the contributions, they have been very, very good. And the questions, they really enriched the whole discussion, so thank you and God bless you. Have a lovely, um, rest of the week and weekend and I'll see you next week. By God's grace.